... meeting of the city council of the city of Cottonwood, held April nineteenth, twenty sixteen, at the council chambers, six P M. Deputy clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Olinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howagie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And councilmember Garrison is absent.
Okay, the next item is pledge of allegiance, and do we have John Valentine, is he here tonight? There we are, okay. John's gonna lead the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, John.
Okay, that fooled us. We've pledged to this flag, we gotta do it over again. I was like, where is it? Okay, so John.
Here we go.
Do you wanna talk a little bit, you're a member of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission now?
Yes.
You wanna share a little bit of information about that?
The Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, it's kind of, it's the youths-
You need to speak into the microphone there.
The youths in the city, it was kind of in a small group, and we talk about matters that we think are important, and things we think we need to change in the community, to help out the youths and the community overall.
Okay, so we have a certificate for you. To say thank you for your service, the Youth Advisory Commission, you're gonna turn around and accept this from the actual city council.
All right, thank you very much.
The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary, unless a specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartasch.
Madam Mayor, two fact announcements, just to let the public know in the council that this Saturday is a free dump day up at the transfer station, and they'll be directing people up there, you can clean up your yards and get rid of all kinds of old stuff, and go take it up to the, close to the transfer station for free. The other thing we'll be doing is, we have twenty thousand dollars set aside for household hazardous waste, so we'll take as much as we can for that twenty thousand dollars, so it'll be first come, first served, but try and get that out of the way as well. And again, that'll be at the transfer station at the west end of Mingus. The other event coming up is on April thirtieth, we have our, this is the third or fourth year of the Heroes Golf Tournament out at Verdi Santa Fe, and they've already sold out all the slots for the tournament, so it's moving ahead very nicely, and again, that benefits the One Hundred Club of Arizona. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, councilmembers, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, this is after the facts, but we had another successful Brian Mickelson memorial run this last Saturday. I believe we had five hundred and thirty-five people register.
Wow.
Which I think is a record, it continues to grow, it went off very smoothly. Richard Faust kept to his time limit and his talk, and things worked smooth. Also, I believe there is a, oh, backtrack. I'd like to remind the public that registration is currently open for summer and fall semester at Yavapai College. We encourage you to look at our schedule and pick out a few classes and come on up and join us. And I also believe there's a concert Saturday night, is that correct, Mayor?
At the college?
At the high school, is that Saturday?
You mean Footloose?
No, the-
Gatlin.
The Gatlin-
Oh, the Gatlin, I was gonna talk about that.
Okay, you can talk about that.
You kind of threw me, which concert?
It supports our Veterans Service Park, the mayor will talk more about that, thank you.
Council, any other updates? So yes, the Gatlin Brothers are coming, and this is a fundraiser for the Verdi Valley Military Service Park, and we really need to sell a lot more tickets, and the cost, you can get them online for fifty dollars. The V I P tickets are a hundred and fifty, I think about a hundred and twenty-five of that is tax deductible, I've been told, and of the fifty dollar tickets, I've been told that about half of that is tax deductible. So we're trying to raise the flag and build the military service parks, so it's, we really appreciate having you all come out and get tickets, but if you can't come to the concert, buy a ticket for a vet, and maybe we can make sure all the veterans can get in, but we really need your help, and it's about our veterans, and it starts at-
I think it's seven o'clock.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
At Mingus Union High School.
At Mingus Union High School, so thank you. That's the concert you meant.
That's the concert.
I like how so many things going on right now, I'm like, which one?
Right, and it is very important to support that park.
It is. So, let's see, Saturday I did attend the Brian Mickelson Run, but I had overlapping events, and I was supposed to speak at the Alternative Plant Festival about conservation that Cottonwood's done, so I ended up parking up on Main Street, so I got my mile in at least, trying to get down there in time to say a few words, but I made it by thirty seconds. So then I went to the Alternative Plant Festival out at Verdi River Growers, and gosh, it was really busy, and there were people just buying plants galore, that's such a wonderful place. If I didn't have another event that I had to get to, I'm sure I would've filled my truck up with plants, so Paul was happy that I had overlapping events. And then I went to the Clarkdale Bank robbery, and that was, I had always read about it and heard about it, but it was actually the first time that I had been able to see it, and they did a great, great job. I dropped in at the Buena Vista Children's Child Abuse Prevention Month Civic, at the Civic Center in Old Town, and met with a lot of vendors that were there to support children and to try to combat abuse of children. And then I was able to get three places in at the Clarkdale Historic Building and Home Tour. I was able to go to the first house, and then the lodge, and the church, and I had always, I've lived here thirty years, and I had never been inside either of those buildings, so it was so much fun to get to see those historic buildings. I really enjoyed that. And I just lost my place. Okay, there was a library volunteer event, and then I went to the V F W Post Specialty Dinner. So it was a very busy day.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
One more event I thought about, and I thought about it when Christopher Robin walked in, is next Wednesday night, April twenty-seventh, there's gonna be a human trafficking forum at Mingus High School Auditorium, and we're gonna premiere the Nursery Rhymes and Daddy's Video, which Christopher produced and was written by our own Scott Mayberry, great talent locally that produced the video, but it's gonna premiere that night, Cindy McCain's gonna be here. She's the chair of the Human Trafficking Task Force for Arizona, and we're gonna not only premiere, but also learn a little bit about human trafficking, so everybody's welcome, come on out.
And that starts at five o'clock?
I've got five thirty.
It's changed a time or two, what is-
It has changed a couple times, but I believe five thirty is-
Five thirty is the new time, okay.
I'll let everybody know, and put it out there, because we love for everybody to be there.
Like five thirty to six forty-five, I think it was, something like that?
Yeah, Cindy will be speaking how their dignity carries there, and we're pretty aware of this, and how we're trying to be there in his office, on the front six facility, probably getting more people at ninety-four, so we don't even know who's gonna be there.
How many people?
In the community, and really help put some on the map here, and just for us to be aware of this.
Thanks, I talked to Gil Mayberry, and she said that it's coming along well, the video, and I think it's done, isn't it?
It's done.
And so it's, they're very excited about it, and they just hope that once they release it, that it will go viral and be all, be all over the nation, maybe the world.
It's really, really well done, I've seen the final.
And you're in it.
Yeah.
And what's that like? Tell us a little bit, so the public won't be shocked.
Let me put it this way, the county attorney wrote me an email and said after she watched it, she wants to punch me in the face.
So you're a pretty good actor, in other words.
But to speak on Doug, he had, not only did he do an amazing job, but due to the fact that Scott Mayberry, his daughter, was the leading girl, who was portraying the, you know, the girl that got human trafficking, he really wanted his most trusted people around him during that whole process, and of course Doug is one of those. And so that's why he was even able to emotionally be able to have, Doug, he was able to do that.
Yeah.
So he did an incredible job being a bad guy, but because he was very-
Pardon? He would like for us to speak into the microphone. Yeah, I think we're-
Are we good?
Yeah.
So they would like you to speak into the microphone, but I think you might be done. But if you aren't, would you please come up to the microphone, if you have any more to add?
Okay, if you've got any more questions, then it's not an answer, otherwise it's not answered.
Okay.
So since we didn't get him on camera, for those of you who may be wondering who Christopher Robin is, you gotta come, come out April twenty-seventh and see.
And see that, so I won't give it away that he did a lot of music on there or anything like that. Spoiler, spoiler, right? Okay, anything else from the council? If not, we'll move on to awards. We have the representation of the Arizona Transit Association's Outstanding Rural Small Urban Transit System Award for twenty sixteen to the Cottonwood Area Transit System. And we're gonna have Bruce, or you, or who's going to talk about this?
Well-
Or Rudy? You guys were there, I didn't get to go, 'cause I had something else I had to do.
Yeah, we were there, we gave you all your notes.
But you do it better.
We were really, we were really proud to hear that our transit system cap and length both was awarded the Small Transit System of the Year Award, Rural Transit System. Bruce has been with us for a number of years now, since he took the system over from N A T A, and he's been working really, really diligently to ensure that we have a top-notch system. As you know, in the last couple of years, we bought, we've finally placed most of our fleet, and as you can see outside, we happen to have what's called an M V one, purpose-built vehicle for mobility. We'll be able to carry disabled people in-site vehicle, as well as passengers if necessary to care for those individuals. And we've used to use our big vans to transport them, makes it very difficult, kind of cumbersome in certain areas. This makes it a lot easier, not to mention they're a lot less expensive in a full-site bus, and a lot more economical. And that's all part of what Bruce and his, their staff have been doing over the last few years, is building the system up, making it more and more dependable, and Arizona Department of Transportation as well, and the Arizona, Arizona Transportation Association has taken note of all the work that he's done. We're real proud of Bruce and his staff, and our hat goes off to them, 'cause those guys work a lot of long hours, and they have an excellent track record, very, very few accidents, very few injuries, and that's kind of unheard of in the transportation industry, we have a lot more out there. But I think they've done an excellent job, and I think they're well-diverting this, this year.
And just to add to that, to illustrate the impact of what the transit system does for the Verdi Valley, we transported over a hundred and eighty thousand people last year on our transit system, so that's, that's huge. That's a hundred and eighty thousand car trips that don't need to be made, or a hundred thousand, any, a hundred and eighty thousand people who were in need of a ride somewhere, and we were able to accomplish that. So really is great work, and the credit goes to both Bruce and his staff, and also Rudy have done a great job with the-
You guys are a great team. And so, I just saw this post on Facebook yesterday, but there was a friend of mine who drove transit for N A T A, I think, and maybe school bus also up in Flagstaff, and she got a, a letter or a note from a young man that she had driven on the bus, and he thanked her and told her what a difference that she had made in his life. And she was just so tickled, because so often transit drivers don't get very many thanks, and, you know, even from our level, you know, they're just always there, they're just always doing their work, like so many employees in, in the city, but I just want to say that I think that Bruce has done a fantastic job with our transit system, he's, he's always thinking outside the box, he's always figuring out how to do more with less. He's trying to, you know, extend the program to benefit others in the Verdi Valley, and I just think that he is amazing, and I just wanna say thank you, Bruce, very much for all you do. So do you have a few words to share with us about this wonderful honor that you brought to our whole community?
Well, I could say a few words.
However many words you would like.
Really, the thanks goes to you, Madam Mayor, the council, and the citizens of Cottonwood, who have supported this transit system for long before I got here. And really, it's because of that support that we're able to do what we can do. Without it, you wouldn't have a transit system, and so it takes not only my team, but the rest of the team, council, mayor, city manager, and the people in Cottonwood, to continue to support us, and we continue to do our best to get people where they want and need to go.
And this council, I'd like to thank the council, because it's always supported transit. We're one of maybe the few or only in the state that have, that has such a small town that supports a transit system. And council's always found a way to do that, we get a lot of grants, you know, to help us, but we do have to take money out of our budget to also support it, and council has always felt that it's added to the quality of life to our citizens.
Well, as you mentioned, we, our drivers here are a lot more than I do in the office. People that we transport, especially those with disabilities, a lot of these folks wouldn't get out of their houses either if we didn't have a way for them to get into a van and get to the doctor's, or to the grocery store, or even to the beauty shop, I mean, you know, a lot of people need to do that. So it's, it's one of those things that we, we take very seriously from the Transit Department, and the people are very, very appreciative of the fact that they have a way to get out of their houses and into the doctor's offices and wherever they need to go, so it's-
And it does help sometimes when maybe someone gets a little bit older, and they decide they shouldn't be driving anymore. Having transportation can help them make that transition a little bit easier.
We have, we have people in their hundreds that are using our buses, because they have a way to get out and about, and so it's quite, quite exciting, our drivers are really characters at times, but so are some of our passengers, and that's what makes it fun.
Right.
Because you just, you don't know who's getting on the bus, but you can always make it a fun time.
Right, and it's kind of like Meals on Wheels and transportation, all of those services keep people in their homes for a longer time, which makes them happier generally, and is, you know, less expensive for them, so it's all-
And we don't do it alone either, the Verdi Valley Care Heroes Coalition does twenty thousand rides a year with volunteers.
The Yavapai Apache Nation, you've worked with them?
Yavapai Apache Nation is another big link to the transportation puzzle. Through them, we have connections with Greyhound, and Monizuma, Lake Monizuma, and Rem Rock, that's the Beaver Creek Transportation.
That's great.
So there's, there's a lot of pieces that interwork here to make sure that the people in the Verdi Valley can pretty much get anywhere they want to in the Verdi Valley without too much trouble. I won't say it's going to be the most direct route to get there, but-
But you can get there, you're right, right. Okay, so council, would you like to come up and represent this along with the city manager and Mr. Rodriguez? We're gonna give this to you again. So if, if Mary can't see you, then probably- So we would like to represent this to you, and then you can put it up on the shelf and look at it.
Actually, I'll put it out on the front counter so everybody-
All right, all right, so thank you so much for all of your, just make a big difference.
Put it on the bus. No.
And now we have a proclamation proclaiming April twenty-first, twenty sixteen, as, whoops, I think I skipped up one, skipped up. No?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sanctuary. Verdi Valley Sanctuary.
Yeah, right, so representation of the Distinguished Service Award for Advocacy, Direct Services to the Verdi Valley Sanctuary from the Office of the Arizona Attorney General. And we have Judge Lasota with us to, to remind us how great this is.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, and city council members, and for the listening audience, I'm Judge Douglas Lasota from the Hattaway Municipal Court. I have with me Dr. Matthew Kelly, the director of the Verdi Valley Sanctuary. I also have with me Valerie Tapia and Mealy Rodriguez, who both are very busy workers over there at the Sanctuary. Earlier this year, I made a nomination to the Arizona Attorney General's office for them to receive one of the Victim Assistance Awards, and it was a statewide competition, and luckily, they were chosen to, to win the award out of every agency in the state, they're the ones that came out on top. I'm just reading a little bit from the Attorney General's office letter, it says, "Dear Judge Lasota, thank you for nominating the Verdi Sanctuary to receive a two thousand and sixteen Arizona Attorney General's Distinguished Service Award. Our Office of Victim Services received a number of excellent nominations in each of the five award categories, and selecting award recipients for them was difficult. Each of the individuals or groups nominated has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to serving victims that truly inspires others. We are pleased to inform you that the Verdi Valley Sanctuary has been selected to receive the Distinguished Service Award for advocacy and direct services this year." And then they invited Valerie Tapia from the Sanctuary to accept the award on their behalf. They're gonna make a few comments here, and I would encourage any woman in the listening audience who's a victim of domestic violence, or if you know someone who's a victim of domestic violence, to feel free to call the Sanctuary, they have safe shelter, counseling, legal assistance for filing divorce, and orders for protection, they assist people with walking into court for their legal matters, they come to court with us when they apply for orders of protection, so they can feel safe and know how to handle the procedures, and so I'd encourage everyone that is in that position or knows something in that position to feel free to call them, and they're a great service to this community, so.
They are, and have been for what, about twenty-some years? Twenty-two, please.
Twenty-two, twenty-three years. I'm very proud of this staff, they work quietly, behind the scenes, very few people know about them, but they'll help any woman, or man, or anyone who comes in looking for support in the court. They're not attorneys, but they're very intelligent, they speak Spanish, they're very creative, they know the court system, and they're trying to make the Verdi Valley families stronger. The Sanctuary works as one of the many behavioral health systems. We're very proud of this valley for working together with the police department and all the other agencies, Spectrum, and Steps Recovery, all of the different agencies work to try to make the Cottonwood families strong. There's about one thousand police responses to domestic violence in the, in Verdi Valley every year. There's probably five thousand serious events that happen that are not reported, but our team helps about seven hundred women through their legal issues. And as you know, court and this, this terrible emotional effort can be very scary, so our advocates really kind of handhold and advise and support and work with-
So our advocates really kind of handhold and advise and support and work with the courts and work with the families to make it as smooth as possible. So we appreciate this town and we appreciate this council and we appreciate the court system and the police department.
All right. Well, we appreciate what you do. Thank you very much. Yes.
Also Valerie's on our co- coordinating community too. So she represents victims of all types in the court system as well too. So for that we're thankful.
So can we give them a big hand? And I would also like to mention that Judge Lasota and the people in our court have supported the Big Brothers Big Sisters fundraiser this year. So thank you Judge for caring about our kids and our families. Thank you. Okay, now we're on proclamations proclaiming April 21st, 2016 as Power Talk 21 Day. Whereas the City Council of the City of Cottonwood recognizes the importance of parents talking with their children about alcohol in order to reduce the risks and dangers posed to children and communities. And whereas high school students who use alcohol or other substances are five times more likely to drop out of school or believe good grades are not important. And whereas 27% of middle school students try alcohol before graduating from the eighth grade, significantly increasing the risk that they will develop alcohol problems later in life. And whereas teen alcohol use kills 4,700 people each year, more than all our other illegal drugs combined. And whereas the majority of kids say their parents are the primary influence when it comes to decisions about drinking alcohol. And whereas Power Talk 21 Day, started by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, or MAD, in 2011, is established on April 21st, 2016 to encourage parents and caregivers to embrace their important role in influencing America's youth and their decisions about drinking alcohol. And whereas to equip parents to talk with their teens about alcohol, MAD Arizona on April 21st will host Power of Parents workshops to give parents the tools to effectively talk with their children about alcohol to protect them. And whereas I urge all citizens to join in the local and national efforts to raise awareness of the importance of parents and children talking together about alcohol to reduce the risks and dangers posed to children and communities. And now therefore I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, do hereby proclaim April 21st, 2016 as Power Talk 21 Day in the City of Cottonwood. Is there anyone here to pick this up tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item. Oh, before we go any further, I failed to make an announcement that Senator McCain's office is here tonight. We have Chris Watland with us. If you want to stand and wave. And he did say if anyone has any questions or comments that he would be happy to meet with you. So just let him know if you do. Okay, the next presentation is thanks from representatives of the One Person, One Night Winter Project for the city's contribution to the project. And we have Cynthia and Joy with us tonight.
Also council, mayor and council members, on behalf of 75 individuals who received shelter this weekend, we've come to thank you for your donation of $2,000 to the One Person, One Night Project. We trust that you were given a copy of our final report, if you have it there in front of you. But as you can see, that Cottonwood's churches, businesses, caring citizens, and service organizations donated an additional $6,700 to One Person, One Night. The report shows that 62 individuals were sheltered in motel rooms, another 10 to 12 in another shelter. One was sheltered in the sanctuary. And so altogether 75 people received shelter in the 2015, 16 winter. And so 69 rooms were given at a reduced rate to this project for Little Daisy, the Verde Valley Inn, and Pines Motel. And 89 room stays were donated free of charge by the Pines and the View.
That's wonderful.
We want to also acknowledge Catholic Charities for serving as the project's fiscal sponsor and for the Loft volunteer Priscilla Maserelli who coordinated the individuals with their stays at the motel. And if it hadn't been for the generosity of these motels, their generosity of heart, One Person, One Night would not have been as successful as we have experienced.
What Joy and I especially appreciated about your contribution of $2,000 is that it really served as a springboard to the subsequent donations that we received from the community. It was not only the donation, but also it really helped to create an awareness about what it was, what One Person, One Night was, along with John's excellent reporting, Verde Independent, about your involvement. And Mayor Jones, through your willingness to put this on Facebook, our brochure, and also on the city website, the publicity then gave us the opportunity also to further inform the community on Verde Valley TV and radio, KVRD.
Yavapai Broadcasting and KVRD. And they're recording this meeting tonight.
Oh.
Although our ultimate goal, as you know, is to create permanent housing opportunities for our homeless here in the Verde Valley. But we believe that One Person, One Night, that program is at least a beginning step in caring for our homeless neighbors.
So again, we express our thank you to you. And we expect that this project will be needed next winter. And so we will see some of you back here asking for support in the fall. Thank you.
And I just want to say, you will probably not believe this, but these two ladies are volunteers. Give them a big hand.
Have a lot of fun.
Amazing what they have gotten done with this program in helping the homeless. And just out of sheer determination and love in their hearts and willing to spend hours, many hours of their day, volunteering to make a difference. That you have made a difference. Thank you. Okay, the next item is Yavapai College Community Update from Dr. Penny Wills' president.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Council members, city manager, I just came from our district governing board meeting. So we reviewed the preliminary budget. I would like to just do a quick shout out to Ryan, who is in the back room somewhere recording this because we just left each other in Sedona. And he does a great job of recording that. Tonight, I want to just thank you for allowing me to visit with you. As you know, we have a number of ties together. And in fact, Randy, you work for us. Terrence, you're part of the college. Thank you for your shout out. And any of the rest of you at the college? I don't think so. A lot of ties here. Mayor, I am always pleased to say that this is the Verde Valley campus. When I speak to Clarkdale, sometimes they claim the campus. And I say, whoa, 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 no, it's the entire Verde Valley. But tonight, what I want to do is do just a quick update. You have a full agenda, et cetera. I love Cottonwood for all the things that have happened so far in your meeting. The homeless is something very precious to me as I serve on the Arizona Community Foundation and stuff. I wish more communities recognized that they had homeless. To the transit, thank you. Not many towns this size have any type of opportunity like that. So just commend Cottonwood for their future thinking there. What I want to do is just briefly go over these two documents. And one, this is one that is my document that I send out about three times a year. Just gives an update, the Yavapai College Community Update. And by chance, not by chance, there are extra copies here for the audience. And I think you'll want, and I will not take autographs, sorry. No, no, that was a joke. But I bring this to you because on the inside, this gives you a glimpse of what, how complex this institution is. And let's just zero in on the Verde Valley campus. You know about the DK Ranch and how we were invited to go ahead and be a recipient of that as far as it was owned by the Steel Foundation. It's up in Cornville. And they invited about five educational institutions to go ahead and apply to see if they would donate it to us. We did not receive it. But I'm very glad to tell you something here. Behind the scenes, the dean of agriculture at University of Arizona and I worked and had it such that if one of the two of us received that ranch, that the other one would be in. This will be a joint program between University of Arizona, who has deeded the ranch, and Yavapai College, your college. All the programs we put in our proposal will be able to be put into that ranch. Very heavy on agriculture, et cetera, and also water studies, et cetera, because of the creek that goes by there. That's just one thing. As you know, Terrence, you and I were at the Wine Center about three weeks ago, was it? With the release of the Cabernet Sauvignon. The classes are full, going well. And if you have not been to the Southwest Wine Center, I encourage every one of you to get up there. It's wonderful. Nothing against Page Springs or Yavaleen and Leap, et cetera. I think we have the best tasting room. The view of the valley from there is spectacular. But the wine is comparable to vineyards that have been in existence for 15 to 20 years. We've received awards already. The Cabernet Sauvignon was wonderful. We now have a new problem. And that is we're running out of inventory. We have, I think, three bottles of Merlot left and two cases of the Petit Syrah. That's a nice problem to have. And so we will soon release the Chardonnay. And this is something, as I see your symbol there, the heart of Arizona wine country. Another example of how the community college here supports what the communities are about. Also, we will have, you know, this unfortunate situation, whatever, with the Valley Academy. I look at anything that seems unfortunate as far as what the state did, we got the money back, blah, 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 et cetera, the change in superintendent, et cetera. This to me is an opportunity for the two institutions to work more closely together. We've got to go ahead and provide more training, career technical training in the Verde Valley. We have been committed to that for some time, continued, but we need a dance partner. And that is the Valley Academy. And so I'm looking forward to that. James Perry, our executive dean, is working closely. Will continue to work closely with the new interim superintendent. And we look forward to having that partnership to be even stronger. So those are some of the things here around Verde. We've had a number of things around the Sedona campus as well. The board, at their meeting, just reviewed the preliminary budget for next year. And in that is over $3 million worth for the Sedona Center to go ahead and do that. The film program is alive and well and even stronger. We had two students there that I was not aware of that were talking about how much they appreciate the film school, which is right here at the Verde campus and everything. So very, very pleased about that. That's this here. And then the rest of the areas of our two campuses and the five sites are listed here. The other document is the annual report to owners. Typically, an administration puts this together. Not here. Our district governing board puts this together. This gives you a synopsis of our goals as far as the three, education, economic development, social, cultural, what's policy, governance, et cetera. Gives you examples of that. And on the fourth or what is it, page, whatever, one, two, three, four, five, just 2015 by the numbers, some things. One that is not listed here, nursing, which is offered at both campuses, has always been and will be. And that is that we have just gotten the results from the 2015 class. 93% pass on the NCLEX exam. It's the highest in the state.
Wow.
And this is Yavapai College. That is typical what we have. The average in the other community colleges is typically around 85. And here we are at 93.
Congratulations.
So very, very pleased about that. So that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions. Terrence, anybody that wants to add to this? Randy, you always have some treasures. What do you?
Keep up the good work.
We might want to remind the community when graduation is on the Verde campus and invite them up there?
Yes, it's May 6th on Friday night at, what is it, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, I believe.
6 o'clock. This is not the typical graduation group. You will love it. And why I say it's not typical now, I'm showing my age here a little bit, but if I hear pomp and circumstance one more time, I think I'm going to not be that excited. We do it with bagpipes.
Oh, me.
And we lead them through the campus and the students come marching through. They pick up the faculty. Well, not pick them up literally, but they go ahead and walk through. And we walk into that pavilion, the Mayberry Pavilion. And it is just a beautiful ceremony. For those of you who go, oh my word, that graduation ceremony will last hours. It's our commitment to get it done in an hour. Because I have sat through NAU's graduation and I thought, my word, I should have brought a sack lunch. And so we like to go ahead and be very cognizant of not only the parents, the students, but also the young children there, their attention span. But we also celebrate very much their confidence. Thank you, Terrence. Thank you.
Are there any questions for members of the public here that you would like to ask of President Wills? Or any questions from our youth, theatse, about the college? We want to, we want to be sure to get you all connected to the college. That's why we have, they have sponsored the Verde Valley SciTech Expo, which is the main event with the SciTech Festival. And we do want to say thank you to you and James and all of the volunteers and all of the employees who made that a great event. Again, the third year this year.
Just to let you know also, when we talk about James, one of the things that we will be doing, as you know, we have a new vice president for instruction and student development. James is a very viable candidate for that. And we chose Dr. Ron Lince, who will be coming in from Cuyahoga Community College. But we will already have James as the campus leader here, report directly to me. He will no longer report to the vice president. And that is also because we have a very, I think, effective associate dean, Dr. Kelly Traynor. So James will still be here, but a direct report to the president. So that, his job is so much like a campus executive person, which he is. So to be able to have that connection. And so he'll be involved in a lot more things on the district level, but from here, and to give that voice to the Verde.
We appreciate all of the work he's done. I mean, he's traveled to check out different schools on the hospitality industry and the kitchen. And so we do appreciate. He studies a lot before he makes decisions.
Also, keep in mind that we have the LEED program coming up this summer. The LEED is, we know from the schools and the school superintendents that all too often, the students in the high school are ready to go to college. But within six weeks of returning home, the parents talk them out of it. This often happens in rural areas and in lower socioeconomic. Our foundation has come forward last year and paid for, what was it, six credits, I believe that they received. And we had room for 20 students on each campus. We only had six from the Verde last year. I'm very pleased to say the enrollment's up. But if you know of students that are, you know, ready to go to college, and I would say again, community colleges are the ones who are the most truthful in that we have truly an office of admissions and not rejection. And so we bring these students in over the summer. They get a leg up. They are doing, the ones that were involved in the program last year are all doing exceptionally well in college. And so I would encourage you to let, you know, just call me. And we will make sure they get an application for that. But we're going to repeat that for next year as well, or for the summer.
So it sounds like your foundation has created some scholarships of six credits. And people in the Verde Valley are eligible to apply for these credits. And so they should do that.
Yes.
Because we need a lot more than six students.
Very much so. Very much so. And the foundation just announced last year, or not last year, on Wednesday, that our foundation board president has donated $100,000 to go ahead to be awarded to high school seniors.
Wow.
To get them to go to college.
Extend our thanks to him.
And he wants it spent.
That's wonderful.
So we're developing the program. That is district-wide. He may live in Prescott, but it's district-wide how he wants those funds distributed, and I support him 500%. About $100,000, I think, is how much I support him.
That's wonderful. That's, that's a huge donation.
Yeah.
And the foundation works for, like you said, both the Prescott and the Verdi Valley areas.
Yeah.
But most of the funds are raised in the Prescott area?
Yes, yes, they are. And, yeah, how would I say? Being president of the whole county, you know, as a part of a college over the whole county, I am so pleased that the people that donate to the foundation do not have anything saying, you know, you can restrict it any way you want to. My husband's, and my endowed scholarship goes for a single parent in the sciences. After that, I don't care what side of this infamous mountain they're on, I just want them educated and everything. And so Prescott does generate a lot of the funds for that. And they do not have anything anti the Verdi to say, oh, well, these all have to stay at Prescott. No, no, they want people educated.
Thank you.
So, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item is the call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 38, 43102H, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the call to the public tonight about an item that is not on the agenda? If not, I'll close the floor to the public and move on to approval of the minutes, the special meeting and regular meeting of April 5th, 2016. Any corrections or Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 5th and the regular meeting of April 5th, 2016.
I'll second that.
So Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Unfinished business.
Mayor? Slipping off on the...
Mr. Dowling is declaring a conflict for the record. Item number one is ordinance number 621, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 1.96 acres located at 950 South Camino Real, property number 40604046H, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C1 light commercial to PAD planned area development. And this is the second and final reading. And Mr. Ellis will present the item. He'll do a very abbreviated presentation for the public. The council has already heard all of these details.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. As you said, it's a rezone from C1 light commercial to PAD planned area development at 950 South Camino Real. It's a vacant car wash right now. It used to be run as a car wash, but it's closed down for a couple of years. The property owner owns some storage units right across the street of Camino Real, and they would like to rezone this to develop indoor storage, approximately 176 units, climate-controlled. It's going to be mostly accessible in sites, it's going to be approximately 37,000 square feet for the building. It's on 1.71 net acres. Traffic's going to flow from Camino Real, entrance on Camino Real, exit circle around the west side of the building, exit onto Elm Street. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in their February meeting, recommended approval to the council, design review, and their master development plan. And staff has not received any major complaints from, or concerns from neighbors or anything like that. There was two that had questions regarding drainage and some air conditioning units. Those have both been addressed by the applicant, and everything seems...
Okay. Questions from the council? Further questions? And any questions from members of the public on this item or comments? If not, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve ordinance number 621.
Second.
That was twins.
Give it to Tim.
Okay. Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Inlinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 621 by title only.
Ordinance number 621, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 1.96 acres located at 950 South Camino Real, APN 406-04-046H, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C1 light commercial to PAD planned area development. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda is next. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is agreement with Traffic Safety, Inc. for street striping services. Item number two is extension of the On Call Professional Services Agreement with CNS Companies for Airport Design and Consulting Services. Item number three is abandonment of a portion of a water line easement that lies within Lot 80 of the Mesquite Hills subdivision Phase 1, property number 40664080. Item number four is person transfer liquor license application submitted by Walter B. Kite, owner, agent for Pizza Hut, Wing Street located at 7472 South Main Street. Are there any items that a member of the council would like to pull off for specific discussion? Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull off for specific discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
So Mr. Howdige made the motion, and the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is ordinance number 620, amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the Municipal Code by adding a new chapter, 9.12.040, prohibiting the possession, use, and/or sale of tobacco products, alternate, alternative nicotine products, or vapor products by or to persons under the age of 21. And this is the first reading.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Mr.?
Tia Soffe.
Okay, I'm just like trying to get there. So yes, please, go right ahead, Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor and Council, as you recall, about in the middle of January, the Yavapai Coalition, Anti-Tobacco Coalition of Youth, Yahtzee, these good folks over here, approached you and indicated that they would like to see cigarettes and tobacco products not be available to, as they are under state law, to people over 18. They would see, like to see them in the city, not available to folks under 21. And the council gave direction to staff. A lawyer who's not talking loud enough?
You're pretty soft spoken generally.
You directed us, Madam Mayor, to, to develop an ordinance. So we got with Yahtzee and met with Jen Mayberry, who ran point on this with, with the youth. And we met and we looked over several, we talked about some approaches and looked at some model ordinances. And what you have in your packets is, is what we came up with. And Jen, and I think her supervisor, we talked about maybe having a conversation with, with some of the retailers in the community, just to see how they might respond to this. Cottonwood would be, there are, there are cities and even one state in the country elsewhere that are, that have done this, but Cottonwood would be the first local government to do this. So we thought we'd see how the vendor community would respond. And I think Jen can speak to this, but I, I think the, there was a lot of support and receptivity to doing this. There wasn't a great hue and cry about the impact it would have on their business. The, the primary purpose of this would be not as, and we actually shared this draft with, with the judge, and, and got, got some great feedback. And so this is a, this is a joint effort here.
And also our prosecutor?
We did.
Okay.
Police chief, city manager, had a, had a cast of many. And the idea behind this ordinance would not be punitive primarily. It would be to educate and encourage healthy choices because the research has settled that folks that pick up the nicotine habit early are much more likely to be lifelong addicts and much more likely to have lifelong health consequences. So with that, I'd like to turn it over. We also had assistance from the Attorney General's office. And with that, I think I'd like to turn it over to Jen and Yahtzee and see what they have to add or correct.
First off, I just want to thank Madam Mayor and the council for even asking for an ordinance. Yahtzee has been planning this for a very long time, and it's something kind of almost a dream come true to see this kind of on the table here, and you guys read that out. But needless to say, Steve kind of summed it up. We, we want this to raise awareness and also, when we were here presenting last time, we spoke with some facts about the causes of smoking by the age of 18, and the neurolog, how it affects the brain, anyway. And this ordinance, I feel, would save, save lives in the future. That's what I want to say. What do you say?
It's pretty much matching what Gunner is saying of how, if we came up with this ordinance, this is really a dream come true. If this is actually passed, it'd be a great, it would mean a great deal to our community. We would see less smoking in the high school because most of the cigarettes that are given to minors are bought by people who are between the ages of 18 and 20. If we take away that right to buy them, there would be a lot less people actually smoking and saving a lot more lives. And does anybody have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Gunner and Sophia that it would make a really big difference in our community, even if it's just something that a small group is working on. It makes such a great impact on everybody. So younger kids will see in the mirror future, hey, this is bad, but hey, there's this new law that's going on that's going to help us prevent all that bad stuff happening to us, and we're going to live longer. So we thank you guys for your time and hopefully reading through the ordinance for us.
Oh, I just wanted to briefly add something. Something that I think is really big in this ordinance is that your school, yes, there is tobacco smoking, but the main thing that I see is vape pens, and they're overly used in high schools, and I'm sure we're not the only one. And they're just brand new, the effects aren't all out there, but the, the information that we have already is already leading to bad signs, just like how they used to say, cigarettes are good for you? They're not. But vape pens have been known, different flavors have been known to cause popcorn lungs, and research has shown that cancer is caused from chemicals burning in tobacco, and they, or the cigarettes that they put chemicals in, they correlate that with the vape pens, and they predict that there'll be an increase in cancer rates if the chemical chemistry won't be changed, but, or will be changed, yeah. But anyway, that's one of the main things that I've seen in this ordinance is the vape pens, and I really hope to see this ordinance for us. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you all, Madam Mayor and Council. It's been a great pleasure to get to work with Steve and, and learn this process, which has been a learning experience for me and our youth as well, and it's just been wonderful. And we're so fortunate to have a few members with us to help answer any questions from the Attorney General's office as well. So we're here to help answer any of those questions that you may have as well. Thank you.
So the Attorney General's office is here tonight?
Yes. Not the whole office.
So we would invite you to speak on this issue if you were, would like to. Because I know that you've been helping answer questions, because when this was presented to me, I said, is that legal? And of course, they started researching and, and you were assisting with that and assisting with our city attorney also. So we appreciate, I know he carried the brunt of the, the chore, and we appreciate it because I think that took you some time. Thank you.
Sure. First of all, I want to start by saying thank you very much to the council for considering this ordinance. I unfortunately have to say, the technical part, my office does not have an official position on this ordinance, but I am happy to provide any information that I can. I am the attorney who's in charge of the tobacco inspection program for the state. So I run the program where we actually test compliance of retailers, sending youth into the stores who are in fact minors and attempting to buy tobacco products. And we, we do see that unfortunately, the sale of tobacco products to minors is an issue. And we have seen, since 2002, when our program began, the failure rate in the state of Arizona is between 15 and 20%. So that means about one in every five kids that walks into a store and tries to buy tobacco can walk out with a tobacco product. So my program is really focused on, on bringing that number down. And we do conduct inspections here in Yavapai County. We will continue to do so, and we would be happy to work with the council and with the prosecutor's office to develop something that's tailored for Cottonwood to assist with enforcement here as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions about our program or the diversion program that's also included in the ordinance, which I also helped develop.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I don't have a question, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm very impressed and pleased to see that this was spearheaded by our youth to help their peers. It really does seem to fit in with our, well, we claim to be in Cottonwood. We claim to be a city that promotes good health. We have the looking good Cottonwood, and this kind of just fits in with our philosophy of, yeah, let's create a healthy community here. So to you young people who spearheaded that, I, I'm really impressed and I thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Let's give them a big hand. As Mr. Pratt states, to have our young people come and talk to city government to try to make change in our community is quite impressive. And that is the first reading. So Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 620 by title only.
Ordinance number 620, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the Municipal Code by adding a new chapter, 9.12.040, prohibiting the possession, use, and/or sale of tobacco products, alternative nicotine products, or vapor products by or to persons under the age of 21. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item two, Resolution Number 2334, approving the execution and delivery of an amendment to the loan agreement dated June 19th, 2015, with the water infrastructure finan- two thousand and fifteen, with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a new loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, from its drinking water revolving fund program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the manager and the finance director of the city, providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by such loan agreement and this resolution, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Madam Counsel, give me just a second. This is one of those items that we've been waiting on for a number of years, as you may recall, that in, in last year, late last fiscal year, we were able to refinance our two thousand and four bonds and include some monies for a water line, a reclaim line on Mega Street, and still save the taxpayers quite a sum of money. This time around, we're coming to refinance our two thousand and six MTC water revenue bonds through a WIFA loan. With me today, I have, I have Grant Hamel from Stifel Nicolaus, and I also have Michael Coficio and Paul Gales from Revert Turek, and I probably butchered both of the names, but nonetheless, we're here to, to, just as, this is a reminder, we, we've already had a partial discussion of this back in January of this year. Council gave us authorization to proceed with submitting the loan application with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, which is WIFA of Arizona, and that kind of started the process of, of the refinance of the two thousand and six bonds. We've been closely working with, with Grant and his staff, and WIFA's staff, and of course, our own city staff, to get this thing kind of queued up for, for approval, and we're at a point where we need council to approve the resolution that's in your packet so we can move forward with this. But before we do that, I wanted Grant to go over a couple of items, items that are on the presentation, and then I'd like for Michael Coficio to kind of go over the resolution, because this is a little bit more complex resolution than the one we, we used back in, about a year ago, so we'll start with Grant to go over the numbers, and then we'll have Michael finish it up.
Thank you for that introduction, Rudy. Mayor Jones, member of the council, City Manager of Artash, it's a pleasure for me to be here this evening. My name is Grant Hamel, I'm the managing director of the firm of Stifel Nicolaus in Phoenix. As, and a mayor, members of council, as Rudy mentioned, this is a financing opportunity that we have been tracking for several years for the city, looking for an opportunity to refinance the debt that was issued back in two thousand and six, to acquire the assets of the Cottonwood Waterworks Water Company and to make substantial improvements to the system. The timing of this financing corresponds to the call date that was associated with those bonds that were issued in two thousand and six. Those bond investors purchased those bonds with the understanding that in the year two thousand and sixteen, the city could exercise its right to call away and redeem those bonds if a refinancing opportunity existed that could save substantial money for the community. Back in January, when we first discussed making application to WIFA, we indicated at the time that there would be several million dollars of savings available to the city, and I'm very pleased to report that because of very favorable conditions in the bond market, a lot of market volatility that's existed this year, those savings are still available to the city. And what I wanted to do this evening is just give you a kind of a recap of where things stand today, and to tell you the savings estimates that you're going to be seeing from me this evening are really quite conservative in that we had been using up to now a artificially high interest rate in our assumptions with regards to this loan rate, but in reality, the loan rate is actually much lower than what we've been estimating in our schedules. We wanted to make sure that we were not overstating the savings to the city in considering taking this action. So, with that, Rudy, if you could turn to the first page of our presentation. And Mayor Jones, members of the council, this is a updated savings schedule to what I presented to you back in January. And as you can see there in column one, that's the current debt service associated with the bonds issued by the city back in two thousand and six, you'll see that it equals approximately one point one million dollars. What the proposal is, is to replace that debt, refinance it here on July one, and effectively replace it with the, a loan that would be executed with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. That loan estimate, the debt service, is represented in columns two, three, and four, and again, that was calculated at a rate of two point three percent. You will see in column five what the estimated savings are, beginning in this fiscal year, a savings to the city of approximately nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, totaling about just under five point four million dollars through the refinancing. So, you might think, well, how is that possible? The WIFA loan rate of, we're assuming two point three percent, is less than half of what the current interest rate is on the bonds. And I would add, based upon my conversations with WIFA today, that interest rate instead of being two point three percent is currently below two percent.
Wow.
As we mentioned, these savings are underestimated, in that you can see on a present value basis, the total is about four point four million, but I can tell you when we updated the numbers today, the savings are approximately five million dollars available to the city through the refinancing. Now, as mentioned, on the left-hand side, what are the program benefits? These are the ones that we've identified, substantial net debt service savings, the WIFA loan rate is less than half of the interest rate on the two thousand and six obligations, more system revenues get retained for capital improvements and for maintaining coverage on your bonds, or on your, on your debt. WIFA offers the city a subsidized loan rate, well less than the two thousand and six obligation right, rate. And as we mentioned before, Madam Mayor, one of the side benefits to this transaction is that through the refinancing, we would be separating the city's borrowing to that of Clarkdale, because they are also pursuing their own WIFA loan that is basically on a parallel track with the city efforts. They will be taking action next week to execute their loan agreement with WIFA. So, again, substantial savings, perhaps a little bit better than what I indicated to you even back in January. Next slide, Rudy. And as I mentioned to you in January, WIFA is primarily interested in making loans for new projects. The fact that they're extending money to the city for a refinancing is an accommodation by them, and they really only allow that if the city is also putting in an application for a new drinking water project. And as we discussed before, staff had identified a much-needed project, which would be a wellsite water line construction along State Route two sixty. Of course, staff knows the details regarding that project much better than I do, but we do understand this line will provide redundancy for Verdi Village Six as well as for the city of Cottonwood. The estimated cost provided by staff is one point nine four million, and the WIFA board of directors have awarded an eight hundred thousand dollar grant allocated to this project, which leaves a net cost to the city of one point one four million. The estimated cost of that one point one four million, again, at the higher interest rate of two point three percent, the actual rate will be probably less than two, is about seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars per year. This is a new schedule that we prepared for you in, in looking at this opportunity that we wanted to present to you, because there was some concern expressed previously by parties about the, the city's plans to potentially borrow additional money for water system projects. So, what we wanted to do is prepare a schedule that looked at the estimated cost of that, coupled with the savings from the refinancing. And so, we looked at the estimated refunding debt service in the first column, that's the WIFA, a proposed WIFA loan. We looked at the cost of the, the two sixty project debt service, and then we subtracted out the current debt service on your two thousand and six bonds, and as you can see, the savings, even after the accommodation of the new money, is still close to four million dollars over the life of the loan. So, even taking into account the cost of the additional project, there is still substantial savings to be gained by the city in looking at this opportunity. If the council decides to go forward with the execution of this loan, Madam Mayor, the expected loan closing date would be approximately four to five weeks from now. That would allow sufficient time for monies to be put into an escrow fund and be available to call and retire the two thousand and six obligations on their call date, which is July one of two thousand and sixteen. So, effectively, on that date, the existing debt would be extinguished and effectively replaced with the, the new loan from, from WIFA. So, that concludes my update, and I would be very happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the financial aspects of this transaction. And as Rudy mentioned, there's representatives from your bond counsel firm, Greenberg Traurig, who prepared the resolution, be happy to respond to any questions you may have regarding the legal process and the resolution itself.
Okay, so can we catch the lights, please?
The other way. There you go.
There we go. Okay, Mr. Ilinski?
Just refresh my memory on this, if you would. So, these, this is not a revenue bond, right? So, there's no, we don't have the same debt service coverage ratio with these bonds that we did with our, our previous bonds?
Yeah, councilmember Ilinski, members of the council, this is not any form of public debt, but even when you enter into a loan agreement with WIFA, they have certain requirements and standards that the city must maintain as well, as far as coverage and things like that. Their coverage requirements are, I would say, more lenient than the capital markets in that they're requiring a one point two times coverage
Okay.
of net revenues to debt service. I think we're well above that, whereas the outstanding obligations have a one point three five times coverage. And they, you know, they have other things such as the, the annual report of the water system would be subject to audit, and they also have a reserve fund requirement, which the city also has set up for the two thousand and six debt. So, not public debt, but they do have loan covenants that would be part of the agreement.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to hear that our, our debt coverage ratio would be less. I think that's, that would be a benefit to the, to the users of the system in the future.
Absolutely, and of course, with the higher coverage by reducing the annual debt service, that elevates the coverage ratio as well.
I did have one other question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is the, the emergency requirement for the, for this resolution, what's the, what's the, what's the emergency?
I'd rather defer to the attorneys to discuss.
Okay, thanks.
Please, Tony. Mayor, Councilman Michael Coficio with the law firm, Greenberg Traurig in Phoenix, been bond counsel to the city for twenty-odd years, I guess, no, a little longer. The finance director had asked me to describe the resolution, I'm glad to do that after I answered a question, if you want me to, but the reason for the emergency clause is that, as Mr. Hamel just mentioned to you, we hope to get this transaction, the rate locked in and closed within the next four weeks. Without the emergency clause, as you're well aware probably from other actions you've taken, we'll have to wait for the four weeks to run to make sure there won't be any referendum. So, we declare an emergency with, with the idea that this is for the betterment of the citizens of the community, get that lower interest rate and be able to lock it in. Interest rates can change drastically, we, we have a lot of work we need to do with WIFA in the next couple, three weeks to get this done, so that's the reason for the emergency.
And so, the cost would be, if we weren't able to get this done in four weeks, our payments to you would have to start over as you reevaluated, and I mean, it could be very expensive to the citizens of Cottonwood?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I, I can't predict interest rates. Interest rates, if I could, I'd make a lot of money and probably find something else to do, but, but again, there's always that possibility. WIFA sets their rate each week based on a benchmark rate that they use for that purpose that comes from another source. So, right now, as Mr. Hamel described, if you were closing this transaction this week, you'd have a rate less than two percent. You know, odds are, interest rates do stay fairly stable, but things can happen. I mean, you know, you could have, you know, some sort of, you know, world calamity or some other event that could cause interest rates to spike, and then all the numbers that Mr. Hamel just showed you, which you're conservative already, wouldn't be valid. So, the concept is, we don't want to take the risk of a change in interest rates, so we try to get this done within a quicker period of time. We don't want to wait for that month to run because we don't have the emergency clause. Again, if, without the emergency clause, the resolution's not effective in that thirty day period, so we can't close the transaction and do a lot of the other things we do until the resolution is effective. So, that's the intent, and the intent is that the citizens of, of, of Cottonwood are better off because the, the interest costs are lower, it's a better, better thing for them, for their, for their welfare.
So, without the emergency clause, we wouldn't be able to close on this for another thirty days, is what you're saying? You want to, you want to close sooner on it?
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have to wait a month to do it, and we'd have, we'd have, you know, whatever risks associated with that. I mean, it would be disingenuous of me not to tell you that rates could go down in, in two months, I don't know. But the idea is, and this is not uncommon, I probably should have prefaced my comments by saying that, this is very typical in these kind of transactions. Anytime we're doing a financing transaction, we try to get an emergency clause for just the reasons I described. It, it takes a lot of time to tee all this up, you know, you manage a lot of expectations, we've done a lot of work with WIFA, we don't want to go to WIFA and, you know, tell them we weren't, we're not able to accomplish it on the timeframe that we told them we would, and again, you, you may have to, you know, you know, change your expectation.
Start from square one again.
Yeah, so, so again, it's, again, it's not completely necessary, but it is more common than not that we use emergency clauses for this purpose.
And just for the public's knowledge, this is a water company that we purchased in two thousand and six, the Cottonwood Waterworks?
The Cottonwood Waterworks.
From the Garrison family?
Yes.
Right, it's, it's kind of, kind of neat for somebody like me that's been doing this for twenty years. We actually planned to do this ten years ago when we originally set this up, this was always kind of the goal, that we would eventually split the transaction. We, we combined the transaction at the time because it would, it made economic sense and there were other externalities that made us do it that way. It was a fairly innovative transaction when it was done.
Has anything like, has one community covered another community's bond anywhere in the state of Arizona? Is that unusual?
Mayor, members of council, I, I wouldn't say, I mean, Clarkdale has to pay their shares, you know, and their remedies, if they don't, very similar to the remedies, but, but using a, using a mechanism like this is
Was unique.
Is unique, yeah. And it, I think at the time served the purpose, and
It did, it worked, it worked out and
And then, again, the problem was, the two system, the water company covered areas of both communities, as you well know, so we needed to buy the whole thing.
Right.
And that's why we had to involve Clarkdale in the transaction to get them, get them to, and get them to do what they needed to do.
Mayor Jones, if I may add something about, our recommendation to proceed is that, as you may know, there is a bill pending that would consolidate the WIFA agency into other state boards and agencies, so the current board that's in existence now that approved the refinancing, that approved the forgivable loan portion of, of the loan, they're, they're going to be disbanded, is my understanding, and the new board reconstituted later in the year. And they have not, as you know, taken action yet to actually approve the financing for the city and the town. My concern, as, as I've always mentioned to the council, is that refinancing is not a high priority for WIFA. It is a low priority for WIFA. They've accommodated the city and the town. My concern is a brand-new board with potentially a different mandate and different marching orders from the governor. They could very well decide later on, you know, refinancing is not something that we're interested in, we want to build infrastructure. A concern I would have is that A concern I would have is that if, if the city council delayed, that there may be a change of heart at the level of the board to even allow going forward with the refinancing. That, that's a concern we have.
I think, just to be clear, the hitch for me is just that it, it takes the power away from the citizens to refer this to the voters, and I don't, I'm just not a hundred percent sure that there is an emergency, but it's a small thing, but it's important to me that we not take that right away from the citizens. But I, but I do understand, I think, I don't see any reason why there would be a referendum filed, because I think the benefits of this far outweigh any, any negatives. You know, I'm on board with this a hundred percent, but just that emergency clause gives me a little pause.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
If they were really that concerned, Tim, they should be here tonight, too, to listen to all the facts and help us make the decision, but it doesn't seem like there's a big uproar out there. They're, they're really worried about it.
Yeah, and I, I would just add, as I've mentioned several times, the amount of savings available through this transaction is greater than, on a relative basis, than I've seen in over twenty-five years
That's pretty amazing.
...in Arizona. And I've, along with Michael and his firm, you know, we've worked on refunding transactions that are several hundred million. But on a percentage basis, the savings available to the city from taking out 4.7%, 4.8% debt with interest rate less than two is just about unheard of.
And I mean, the future isn't necessarily very bright to have interest be that low for a long, long time again, is my guess.
We've said that for about ten
I know.
And yet rates continue to stay low, and as more volatility in the world, interest rates, especially US Treasury rates, tend to stay low. And as Michael said, they could go lower, but they are where they're at today, which is, you know, near record lows, not perhaps the lowest rate they've been for years, but they're extremely low right now. And furthermore, basically what WIFA offers, and I should have mentioned this earlier, I think I mentioned it in January, they're a AAA-rated borrower, so they borrow very cheap. And then based upon the demographics and economics of the borrower, they will subsidize the loan rate. So if their rate is normally 2% for the city of Scottsdale and the city of Tempe, and they're active borrowers from WIFA as well, they're giving the city of Cottonwood and the town of Clarkdale a 20% rate subsidy that will take the rate from, say, 2% down to a 1.8%. So not only are they giving the grant, the forgivable principal, but a very low subsidized interest rate that not even Phoenix, Scottsdale, Tempe can borrow at. This is a loan rate that is well below what the highest rated borrowers in Arizona can get today.
Do you have a question, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I just want to say, this seems almost too good to be true. In a sense, we have been worried about the amount of debt Cottonwood has, and it seems to me that this is a move that will actually help lower our debt.
Absolutely.
So it's a really positive thing for the city of Cottonwood. So those who are talking about our, our debt and our concerns, and we're all concerned, this is a positive action to help lower what many people see as a problem, including me.
Well, again, as I showed on that one schedule this fiscal year, the savings are almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
We're effectively relieving the city of having to pay debt service on the 2006 issue because we're replacing that with a lower interest rate loan that doesn't start to pay, or doesn't, you don't start to pay on that loan until next year. So again, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars this fiscal year.
So if we do approve this, we are making positive steps and proactive steps to solving part of what we see as a problem in the city, and it's a good thing to me.
To reduce debt.
I don't see why we would walk away from that kind of money and that kind of savings.
Any other councilmembers have comments before I ask the public what they think? Okay, I would ask members of the public if you have any comments about this item. I would welcome them. Mr. Pratt?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2834 and authorize the Administrative Services General Manager to execute and deliver the loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its Drinking Water Revolving Fund program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you for all the work that you've done, reducing our debt and our interest rate.
That's a good thing.
Yes. Okay, item number three is request to waive
Madam Mayor?
Oh, excuse me, this would be like rather important to read. They're not going to let me get by with that. Okay, Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2834 by title only.
Resolution Number 2834, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving the execution and delivery of an amendment to the loan agreement dated June 19th, 2015, with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a new loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its Drinking Water Revolving Fund program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the manager and the finance director of the city, providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consumption of transactions contemplated by such loan agreement and the resolution declaring an emergency. Madam Mayor.
And were you following along? Make sure we did every word correctly.
I think consumption was consummation, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right, so that correction stands, so thank you very much. Okay, the next item is request to waive Section 8.52.020 of the municipal code to allow for overnight camping at Riverfront Park for the Tilted Earth event.
Madam Mayor, I will be declaring a conflict of interest on this item in the next, please.
Okay.
You are what?
He's declaring a conflict.
Because?
Because I feel I have a conflict.
Okay, I was just wondering, I thought it was because
No, no, no.
Had something to do with committee stuff, no, sorry.
No, not committee.
My confusion.
No. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, Tilted Earth is requesting a waiver
So you want to go ahead and
No, I'm, I'm Section 8.52
Please.
Do I have to
That's what we, that's what we do.
I didn't know it was required, but I love to do that, but I will do that.
I'm the chairperson, and I'm asking you to please do that.
I will do that.
Thank you. That's what we all do.
It's okay.
All right, thanks.
Madam Mayor, Council, Tilted Earth and staff is requesting a waiver of Title 8, Section 8.52.020, to allow for camping at Riverfront Park on June 17th, 18th, as a part of the Tilted Earth Music and Wine Festival. This is to elicit additional economic local impact. As we all know, there are 300 rooms in the Cottonwood City Corporation limits. This would help us to keep these people local, hopefully garner additional tax revenue from them. And if the staff sees us as a good thing. Welcome any questions.
Mr. Pratt?
Can I utter a phrase?
No-brainer.
This is a no-brainer.
Sorry.
We've supported this event, and yes, it helps, it gives people a place to stay. We know we have issues with motel rooms, and the more people we keep there, the safer it is. I, I just don't see why we would not waive this and allow this. I see nothing negative, nothing conflicting in it.
Okay, any other comments, Mr. Ilinski?
It's come up during the committee meetings about collaborating with Dead Horse Ranch State Park. What's, what's their thought on this? Because I, I don't know if they view it as maybe potentially taking business away from them or, or adding to the, to their business, so I'm just curious what their thought was on this.
Staff has reached out to Dead Horse on a couple of different occasions. From our, from our understanding, in the past, this is typically not a low season from them. In fact, they're at capacity or approaching capacity most of the time this time of year, so.
Okay. So they're all right with it?
We've, we've reached out to them, we haven't heard anything back, but from our information in the past, they've been at capacity. And our rates are also very comparable, $15 a night for camping, 25, two nights for camping, and $25 a night for RV.
Great.
Actually, working at the chamber, people are coming in now and have been for a couple of months because Dead Horse is filled, they can't find any place to camp, and they're looking for alternative places to camp, so Dead Horse is pretty busy right now.
Also, at the Flywheelers event, one of the vendors who lives here part-time said that he was having so much trouble finding a place to camp with his RV, and he asked me if there would be any more places to stay. And I did mention the new one in Clarkdale that will be built, and he was quite thrilled to hear that. So any comments from members of the public on this item? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion if it's
Mr. Dowling?
I'll move to approve a waiver of Cottonwood Municipal Code, Section 8.52.020, to allow overnight camping at Riverfront Park Adult Ball Field Complex during the Tilted Earth Festival on June 17th and 18th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is cosponsorship partnership agreement with the End of the Tunnel Ventures LLC for the 2016 Tilted Earth Festival.
Madam Mayor and Council, your packet information, we're looking at a cosponsorship agreement. End of Tunnel Ventures had basically submitted a, what they felt was an agreement document that worked well in January, and we continued to commit the, the information directly to the attorneys. We've actually, as a, I think, I'm trying to think, between Steve Horton, Andrew Miller, and Andrew Miller is a contract individual for attorneys, has some specialization in this area, and also with attorneys from Gammage and Burnham, they've worked on this document that you have. Again, this is a, this is consideration for approval of proposed cosponsorship agreement between the city and End of the Tunnel Ventures LLC for the Tilted Earth Festival for June 17th and 18th. The attached information, it's, it basically proposes the agreement that delineates the city and EOTV's respective duties, their rights, and the responsibilities, as it's relating to the festival and provides for reimbursement of the city's investment, which is $72,000, and the event from the proceeds generated from ticket sales and other revenue-generating activities. The city is primary above all, as you, if you read the document, stating that the $72,000 cash basically would be fully reimbursed through ticket sales, and we would be the first one on the receiving end of that. On December 15th, 2015, the city council authorized the city to participate in the 2016 Tilted Earth Festival as an investor and co-sponsor, including making reimbursable investment up to $72,000, subject to the development of an appropriate agreement, providing for the conduct of the event, the division of responsibilities and collection and distribution of proceeds, and other details. And so, therefore, this is what this document primarily does, is it provides very specific details as to who does what and how this is going to be dispersed throughout. One thing I wanted to give to council before any action or information is that there's some minor details that have changed, very minor, specifically in the document on page four, under, this would be under, let's see, section number eight, financial responsibilities. One of the things is, is that in discussion with the attorney, Andrew Miller, is that the city's really not in
That's Andrew McGuire.
McGuire, sorry.
Andrew Miller's the town attorney for
I apologize, Andrew McGuire. The one thing Andrew was, was identifying very specifically is that the city is not in the position to actually be a recipient of revenues over this, the amount of $72,000. And so we would like to be reimbursed up to the $72,000. We're not a business or a corporation that makes money in that context of things. And so that was one of the things that Andrew was very specific about. The wording for city reimbursement is, that we're looking at as a change, is EOTV, EOTV shall reimburse the city for a portion of the costs incurred by the city in providing the materials and services set forth in Exhibit B. The reimbursement amount shall not exceed the amount spent in cash out of pocket by the city, shall not be greater than $72,000 unless otherwise mutually agreed upon, and shall not exceed 50% of the gross revenues for the event. There was also, in the context that Andrew had indicated and with Steve, also is that, again, the gross amount would be capped at $72,000 under Item C for audit procedures. And then also, one of the things that Gammage and Burnham, as well as EOTV, had identified under number, Item Number Three on Page Seven, was that the section identifies that EOTV is responsible for all of the festival participants, and that means on anything associated with sales generated by or at the, the related festival, EOTV would further agree to take all steps necessary to execute any required documents to permit the city's authorized representation, to examine any such records and things of that nature associated with the festival and the participants. And that's one thing that they were requesting would be stricken from this document, is that they don't feel that they should be required to do that, and in the context of, we would still be receiving, basically, the, the insurance documents that would be specifically related to that under any circumstances with any of these individuals. So again, those are minor circumstances that we would be looking at. The other thing that Andrew made sure of when he was discussing this with me is that, to clarify, that the, the city services being provided, that is, police and fire are without charge to EOTV, and that's under the, the actual city obligations, is that, again, that is without charge. Wanted to make sure that that was identified to the city council. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Pratt?
I, I just have comments. I'm glad to see we finally have this agreement. I know it took a long time and a lot of work, and I do know there was some anxiety on the part of some people that it was taking a long time, a lot of work, and we're trying to work so smoothly with this other company that it, it's a good thing that we have this agreement now, and it's a good agreement for both parties. And it means we can move ahead with, with what's going to be a wonderful event for Cottonwood.
And I know that the city, that, that, Steve has, has definite, worth, definitely worked with Gammage and Burnham before, and as well, as somebody who we're, we are definitely, we, they have notoriety as well, and I was surprised there wasn't any other requests in the, the document, so came back fairly well.
Mr. Pratt?
The other thing I'd like to say is, since I received this, I have read it very, very closely, and it, it really matches what we agreed on, and it doesn't put any more liability on the, the city, it's just a good partnership agreement, and I think we should approve it.
And Madam Mayor, Council, in light of what Richard was describing, that we're still ironing out just a few details, the motion should include that the approval is subject to approval of the final form of agreement by
The attorney.
The city attorney.
Subject to what?
Fi, approval of the final form, the, the changes Richard described that are still, we're just hammering out those last details.
Those should be completed by tomorrow, because they're still minor.
So I would agree that that should be
Part of the motion, subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney.
And I do like, you know, reading here that, that you anticipate that the $72,000 will be fully reimbursed through ticket sales and other proceeds from the event. So from the time we, the committee was created until now, you've come a long way in that arena.
Yeah.
Very true.
So done a lot of work on that, figuring out how to
Good document, I think that they did a very good job, the attorneys did.
Yes, they have. So we do have Tilted Earth Festival people here from Page Springs Winery. Do you all want to share any information with us, or? Do you all want to share any information with us, or does anyone have any questions for them?
We were just making sure that Richard had all the changes.
Okay. Did he pass the test?
Yes.
Okay, you've got those memorized, if I know you. So, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the proposed cosponsorship agreement between the City of Cottonwood and End of the Tunnel Ventures LLC for the 2016 Tilted Earth Festival with the minor changes suggested this evening.
Second.
Subject to-
Subject to-
Recommendation.
Subject to recommendation.
Subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney.
Subject to, again?
Approval of the final form of agreement.
Approval of the final form of agreement.
By the city attorney.
By the city attorney.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm still opposed. I could just explain it to the public.
Okay.
I support this event, you know, one hundred percent. I have shown up to many, not all, but many of the, of the planning meetings. I am on the committee to plan it, so I want to see it be successful and I know it will be. But as I mentioned the last time we discussed this, I'm just concerned about using the public's money in an at-risk partnership with a for-profit company. It's just kind of an odd duck that we're, we're kind of juggling here. So, because of that, I'm just concerned about, you know, how we're spending the public's money, though I do think it will be successful and looking forward to it myself.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Still opposed.
Okay, and you explained it. I was going for discussion first. Okay, so, the major passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is public hearing and possible legal action regarding an application from Rebecca Riffle to hold weekly games of bingo at the Main Stage Bar and Restaurant to benefit local charities. And Vice Mayor, I would have to declare a conflict on this.
Madam Mayor, sorry to see you go, but, and Vice Mayor and members of the council, as always, thank you for your time and your counseling. So, this is, it's actually a very, and also I do need to apologize for the fact that I have to keep my hat on right now. I am working on my fourth business that I've got here in the Verde Valley and my hat head is far more offensive than the hat on in the building. So, to get down to, we talked two weeks ago at length of what we were trying to do, and we've actually gotten some exciting news. And, and this is sort of a tri-fold situation for us. And I say tri-fold in the sense that we got a call from Joanna from the Arizona Department of Revenue, who said that she, she and the city attorney, state attorney, had been reviewing, you know, our license and our options and, and all the legalities, and saw no reason why we couldn't do this. What she did suggest, and what actually becomes even more beneficial for our community, and something that Mr. Linsky is going to, I think, like after two weeks ago's discussion, is that we file a Class A. So, the license would go into Ms. Riffle's name. And that would give us the opportunity to pick weekly or monthly any charity that we have to present ten percent of our, of our pot to local charities. So, if you look at it in the sense that since May eighteenth, we will be at our three-year anniversary. We'll be open for three years. So, in three years, we've done twenty-one, thereabout, charities or benefits from, from personal things to, you name it. I mean, we can go back through all the records and pull those out. With this opportunity on a weekly basis, now we're looking at forty-eight different charities or different opportunities to give back to the community on a yearly basis, including the other ones that we're already doing by ourselves. So, it's, it's very exciting, and when I say tri-fold, again, it's, one, we're in a demographic, we're not in Old Town, we're still struggling to figure out how to be a part of Cottonwood. You know, it's, Old Town has, has got its clique and you all know it, and, and we're still just eighteen feet away from it. So, we're constantly trying to figure out how to be, you know, a part of the community more than we can. And with that said, we've got about twenty-one employees. I don't know how many kids. I leave that up to her to determine how many kids we're also supporting, but we've got twenty-one employees. Our Wednesday nights went from one employee, one employee to six, and sometimes eight employees in a single night because of this two-and-a-half-hour bingo, you know, event, which brought out every demographic that would normally never come out. It brought people together. It was just a fun, fun event, and we were able to give back to the community. We've, we've almost raised a quarter of the funds for this kid who's a quarterback at Mangus High School, just with his Krispy Kreme donut deal every bingo night, for him to go to camp in the summer. The mission, you know, the penny was part of it. I mean, it's, it's a great, it's a great event, and the third part of that tri-fold is that we get to keep our doors open. It's helped us go from a night that is a loss to a night that is not only gaining for us in keeping our doors open, but employing our employees, but the community as well. And so, as a songwriter, I hate to plagiarize, but I've got to plagiarize Mr. Pratt and say, this is a no-brainer. It's, it's just a win-win for, for all of us, and even though the Class A license doesn't specifically say that you have to go to charity, we are going to be doing it as we always have, even from the beginning.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for plagiarizing me.
Absolutely.
I couldn't think of anybody that I'd rather have plagiarized me. And I think you're wrong. I think you have started to figure out how to become a member of the community. As I said, I regret that I haven't been able to make any of the Wednesday nights. I was going to come to our night and really blown away with trivia, but I have another meeting. But I think you guys have been a great part of the community. You add to our economic development, as you said, on Wednesday nights by drawing a bigger crowd. You give the community something to do. I hear great things about it. And there's the sales tax, and you're keeping people working. So, yes, I think this is a no-brainer. I think it's a, just a, just a great event, and I really think you and Becca have really done a lot to make yourselves part of our community and have volunteered a lot of time for different issues. So, I appreciate what you've done and appreciate your business.
I love it here.
Think you're doing a great job and want to keep you here.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the council have any questions or comments?
Just one. So, the license that you're, this A license that you're applying for now, so, again, you're not making any money off of it. I read that in here, but, so, ten percent's going to go to the charity, then the other, the ninety percent goes back to, in fact, you never played bingo before, so I'm showing my cards.
For every bingo pot, essentially, somebody, or everybody that's playing buys a card for a dollar. Okay, so that's that bingo pot. So, from that pot, we both pay two-point-seven percent tax on that, and then from that pot, ten percent of that will go to a local charity.
And the rest goes-
And then the rest gets distributed for our second and third place winners.
Okay.
It's actually two-point-seven-five percent.
Okay. So, is that, is that non-negotiable, though, that percentage? I'm just curious if the people playing bingo could say, we, we want all proceeds to go to an event, or is that something that's required by state law?
Absolutely. I mean, if somebody, if somebody, you know, wins, you know, X amount of dollars and says, well, this charity has really worked for me and I want to donate, you know, more, then that's-
Could be done.
We're now setting up a forum for that to even occur.
Right.
I'm sorry, but the, the tax is set by statute.
The taxes, but not the ten percent going to charity. It could be any percentage.
That's, that's what I asked.
Yeah, got it. Great. That's all.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody out in the audience have any questions? Yes, ma'am? Need to come up to the mic?
Can I speak to the committee?
You need to come up to the mic, please. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Sari McQuality. I have lived in Cottonwood for five years. I am a member of the Elks Lodge, who currently has a bingo night on Monday. There are two other nonprofits in the area that have bingo on Wednesday night, and I'm not sure what the other night is. It's the American Legion and the VFW. We are all nonprofits. The people who run bingo are all volunteers. There are no wages taken. Money is given to the bingo players, and the profit that is taken is given back to the community. With these three nonprofit, we give back to the veterans, we give back to the kids, and this has been going on for years. And what happens with bingo is when another group starts, somebody else gets hurt. Nonprofits right now are running on a very thin budget. They don't have a business that they run seven days a week. They're lucky to stay open two or three nights. One is bingo. Again, by doing this, they do pay taxes, just like everybody else. Money does go to the community. They're, they are nonprofit. We are all volunteers. My concern is with them making a profit, and it's a no-brainer for them.
Not making a profit.
Not a profit, I apologize. But a no-brainer for them will be a no-brainer that in a few years, if not in six months, you will not see the VFW, you will not see the American Legion, and the Elks Lodge will close down too, because they really do depend on this money for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council or the audience, or?
I totally, I, I understand the apprehension or change of any kind in a community that is based itself on a system and a schedule, and by no means will we ever not support our local groups. We're a part of the community, and we have a completely different demographic. It is a demographic that is not going to be going to be the Veterans Love, the Elks Lodge. And I'll put it out there right now in public, if we need to help you, we will do that. That's, we are trying to stay in business and do something for the community, period. And we're not making a profit off of this, you know, this night, other than what we would normally make a profit of, which is food and, and our beverage sales. It's two-and-a-half hours once a week, and that's it.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I, the point I was going to make is, you do have a different demographic. I don't think the folks that go to the American Legion are going to come to Main Stage and vice versa, so.
From what I understand, it's a totally different type of bingo anyway. It's not like what they-
It's aptly called, "It's not your grandma's bingo."
I want it again.
Because unfortunately, the, oh, or fortunately for you guys, the people that would go to your bingo would never come back to ours. And that's just the reality of it.
Yep.
Any more questions? Comments? Take a motion? Mr. Pratt?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue issue a bingo license to Rebecca Riffle, who holds weekly games of bingo at the Main Stage Bar and Restaurant located at One South Main Street.
And do I have a second? Okay, I'll do it second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? You got it.
Thank you, Judge.
Good luck. You.
Absolutely.
Did the bear have a conflict? I don't know. She had a conflict.
Yeah. I'll give you a call.
The next item is discussion, consideration and possible legal action regarding the city magistrate's job performance, employment and compensation pursuant to ARS 384310381, A1. The council may vote to convene an executive session to discuss the magistrate's performance, subject to the magistrate's right to compel the council to conduct that discussion in an open meeting. So, we did send the official letter, and you said that you didn't care whether it was an executive session or public.
I think it's always whether the council-
So, council, what is your pleasure? We still have a quorum.
Open.
Open, so yes, that sounds good to me.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I've got an early commitment in the morning. If the council doesn't need me for this, I'd like to request to be dismissed.
That would be great. That would be fine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No offense, Judge.
Okay, so, do you want to just go ahead and share your accomplishments with members of the public and the council?
Sure. And I have, I know it didn't look like it turned out good in your materials that you received, so I have the color code, Revenue collected for 2019-15 and Keith's filing for 2019-15. Reach use of, because there's one of them, I'll make the address.
Your black and white's not much of a color code, is it?
And I don't know what the number is, not realible either, so.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I filed the written early progress report, so I won't try to regurgitate everything that's on that. I just want to point out a few things. Our performance stats as set forth by the Arizona Office of Courts has been very excellent since I've been here, and they continue to get better every year. The pending to filing ratio has been excellent all along, and it continues to improve every year. The clearance ratio, it started out in 2012 was good, and then 2013 fiscal year was very good, and then it moved up to excellent. And now, we're in a category kind of like a super-excellent, I don't know what I call that. Means we're clearing one-hundred-and-sixteen percent of our cases every, every year. And the way we do that is, a lot of cases are on warrant status, and what we've been trying to do is make a, a very involved look at those cases that are several years old. You know, might be somebody that's, doesn't have a social security number, or there's no way of reaching them, the case is over five years old, we're never going to see them again, cases that go to Maricopa County, or the people that move out of state, we're never going to see them either. So, we've worked things out with the prosecutor where certain types of cases that are over five years old get dismissed, and that way, the police aren't trying to chase them down for warrants when they might not even be here. So, a lot of those cases are, are getting resolved, and a lot of them, you know, there's been some police enforcement as well on warrants, so more cases are coming to us that way that we're resolving. So, you know, one point, one-hundred-and-sixteen percent ratio is, is very excellent for the clearance ratio. Our months to disposition for civil traffic cases, anything under four months is excellent, and we're down to one-point-two months. And just two years ago, it was a two-and-a-half months, and we have that in just the past year, and we can't really get to any faster than one-point-two months, because when an officer gives somebody a citation, usually they have three or four weeks before they have to show up. So, we can't resolve them any quicker than that, but we're getting, getting a result pretty quick after that. Some cases obviously have to go to trial and that and everything, so those, those get averaged in as little higher amounts of time, and there's nothing we can do about that because everybody has to write a hearing. In regard to the charts that I just gave you, you know, over the past couple of years, there was a lot of police downturn in staffing because of different issues. I think last year, there was like four officers who were in family medical leave act for pregnancies. A civil traffic hearing officer wasn't writing any tickets for several months because he injured his foot and he wasn't writing citations for a lot of years. So, things went down quite a bit last year, but if you look at the revenue collected, that's the top page of what you have, it, it shows that we've been holding pretty steady the past three or four years on revenues that come in, even though in the next page, you look at Keith's filing trend, those last couple of years have ended. and then it went down quite a bit the last two years. So, recent things have been staying, standing on the revenue collected is we've been making extra efforts to try to make sure that even though the cases have gone down, we're doing everything we can to try to do collection enforcement. And we found all files from previous regime and that type of thing that didn't do defaults on civil traffic, where people didn't show up. So we've found in quite a few cases, and we've been able to turn over to the state collection agency, and they're able to do state tax intercepts, they put lots of people's registrations on their cars, so if they wanted to take their car register again, they need to pay up, you know, debts to the court, that type of thing. So, a lot of things we're doing has been trying to make sure that the city doesn't take the hit, even though we're taking hit on a number of cases coming in because of, uh, police department issues that hold their own control over. So I think that speaks well with my staff, that we've been able to keep those revenues steady. And even just the past two years, you know, there's a 12, just a $12,000 drop, even though from 13 to 15, there's a 500 case drop to 12,000, 500 cases. That means we've been doing a lot of collection. It's been successful. We have an excellent relationship with police to work, and we continue to have that. I met with Chief Gazelle early on, when he was, after he was appointed and became a part of our community. Um, we're both committed to working together on issues such as homelessness and handling issues that are, that are becoming more and more, uh, big issues in our community. We continue to work together on the handheld computerized citations, that's a piece is quicker. It's more convenient for defendants, there's fewer errors that probably dismissal. And those are things that we have, we originally came together on years ago with the court, making expenditures important things, and making expenditures on handheld devices. So, that way they can, they can print those out right at the scene of a, uh, issuing a citation. We've had students coming to our court recently. Just two weeks ago, we met with eight to nine grade students. We gave them an overview of the court, and the court system, we answered questions. Then they got to sit through arraignments to see how procedures work at our initial appearances and arrangements. I provided you copies of my certificates for everything I've done over the past three years since I have to, since I have to obtain additional training. I'm the only person in the state to complete the Arizona Court Supervisor, the Arizona Court Manager, and the Arizona Court Executive Programs. Many have done one or two. I'm the only one that's done all three. And that's of a benefit to the court as far as management ideas. Janie and I are also one of the few teams in the state that are both nationally certified as certified court managers and certified court executives. The, uh, appointment of city magistrates, council authorized starting years ago to save the city thousands of dollars in pro temp cases. I think one of my attachments to the progress report showed, or maybe I referred to it in the progress report itself. Last year, fiscal year 2015, by keeping everything in-house and not having to go out of house, it was $229.50 since fall it cost us for pro temps. I think Mayor Jones knows how much it was years ago when we had a previous regime, and there we happened to use pro temps all the time. And, you know, most years, most years, five in the past, out of the past seven, I think, were like $1,200 or less. And at $50 an hour, and say that was eight hours a day, that's 400. That's like three days. Three days during the year when we didn't have somebody.
It's pretty impressive.
Other things. So, I, I think you see that it saves quite a bit of money, plus it also allows for no gaps in coverage. If I'm sick, or on vacation, or whatever, there's plenty of people to stand in my place. If someone has an order of protection, there's always somebody there that can handle that order of protection when they come in. Nobody is left getting turned away from the court, because we don't, we don't have a judge. That's a problem that many of the courts, virtually all of the city courts on this side of the mountain have, as well as even the justice court right across the street from us. There are always short judges. We always have someone that's gonna be able to listen to somebody that has order of protection and decide whether or not it's appropriate to issue one. Same thing with injunctions against harassment. I read with great interest the, uh, the jail study that was done by the outside consultant. A couple of things just to point out from, from their comments. First, first it says, "One way to keep jail population numbers down is to increase programs that address underlying issues for inmates, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental illness. She found very few alternatives to incarceration in the county." However, we've been doing things for the past seven years where we're working with Spectrum, we're working Catholic Social Services. Even Mr. Horton, when I told him I, we had an issue with people getting to where they need to go for their initial appointments and that type of thing, he said, "Well, can we give them bus passes?" So luckily that precaution, and Rudy went along with that as well as, as the, uh, bus department. And, uh, now we give them one bus pass, it's a daily pass, that allows them to go to Catholic Social Services and to the Spectrum. And then once they're accepted by Spectrum, Spectrum gives them passes for their future visits. So now we don't have the excuse anymore, "I couldn't go to, I couldn't go to the agency." So that was, thanks Mr. Horton for, for that idea and the, and the quick action he took. I'm, I'm making sure that that, that happened. Then another part of that, uh, report said, "It's critically important to have pre-trail diversion programs at the time of arrest." We've had that for six years. I think within a year after I got here, we, we started with the, uh, diversion program. And, uh, also, starting where we had prosecutors and defense attorneys there at the initial appearances. Now nobody sits in jail more than seven to 10 days at the most, sometimes only one or two days, before they see, before they see a judge and resolve their case. In many of the cases, since we are a misdemeanor court, are minor cases, and we don't want to have to warehouse somebody for two, three, four, or five weeks when a minor shoplifting might be their first offense. They're not gonna get more than a few days on a sentence anyway. Why hold them for even longer than what their ultimate sentence would be? So, that also helps with the, keeping the population in jail down as well too, which obviously saves all of us as taxpayers within the, the county as well. Probably the most serious issue that's going on right now, and the most difficult one, is the mentally ill homeless cases. Those, those are probably the most difficult cases. As indicated, we've been doing the deferred prosecutions. We've been doing that quite a bit over the past six years to deal with them. Um, sending them to, emphasizing counseling, Spectrum, mental health, alcohol, drug abuse counseling, and referrals to Catholic Social Services. Mr. Jordan, within the past week, after working with myself and, and Mr. Shaw, the court-appointed attorney, has come up with an alternative sentencing program. So even if they don't get a deferred prosecution, if somebody that needs to, to do a plea agreement, plead guilty to one or more, more charges, his alternative sentencing program emphasizes the counseling and seeking services, um, because most of them are not able to pay anything. So turning them on fine doesn't do any good. What doesn't seem good is, is the ones that actually make it up with their bus passes, the Spectrum or the Catholic Social Services. And that's, that's something that's been very helpful. And Mr. Jordan's new program is something that gives us some additional options too, to try to, to work with these people and try to get the right kind of results.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you mind if I interrupt you there?
Sure.
Are you saying many repeat offenders come through?
Sometimes. We've had a good, we've had good luck with rehabilitation in most cases, because say a domestic violence is resolved, or DOI's and that type of thing. Most of them, when they go through the counseling program, we don't see them again, except when they come to make due payments or bring in their proof of completion, that type of thing. There's a certain number that, um, are gonna be repeat offenders no matter what because of the mental health issues. And, uh, we were seeing a lot more repeat of them, but now we're trying to, trying to force them as part of their dispositions of their cases to go to, uh, seek assistance at Spectrum and with Catholic Social Services. And, uh, some of the referrals to Catholic Social Services, just within the past two weeks, we had two people who were ordered to go to Catholic Social Services to seek assistance for housing. They actually obtained new housing. So instead of being homeless, they now have housing. And one of them was a chronic person that you may see walking up and down the streets all the time for the past few years. And I was kind of shocked that she finally, finally was able to do it, but, but it was because we insisted as part of her terms of probation that she go to Catholic Social Services and show them a copy of paperwork from us and to try to do something about it. And to our pleasant surprise, she found housing. So now she's not wandering the streets. You know, when she was on the streets, she had a problem where she was drinking too much alcohol, and she'd pass out, and people would rob her and take things out of her backpack and, you know, violate her in, who knows what other ways, including assaults and, and maybe something more serious, I don't know. But now, now she has a safe place to be every night. So some of our programs are, are very successful. Obviously, we can't solve all the problems in life, you know, some of the ones that are homeless with no money, and they can't even pay anything towards housing through Catholic Social Services. That's a difficult issue now, because the problem is there's serious constitutional issues with punishing somebody, say on, on just a camping case. Because the problem is if someone has a right to be within city limits, a necessary life function is sleep. And they kind of sleep somewhere sometime. They're gonna sleep on a private lot somewhere, or in a city park or something. The Eighth Amendment cruel and unusual punishment clause and, and some cases that have come out of the Ninth Circuit say you can't punish them if that's their only offense, because that's a necessary life function. That's what would be cruel and unusual, punish somebody just for camping. Now, if they commit other offenses like littering or things like that, then, then some things can happen with that. But, most of these type of people, we're, we're doing, uh, we're doing the putting on probation with a requirement that they remain law-abiding, follow certain terms and conditions of probation, one of which is to go to Spectrum and, and/or to Catholic Social Services, most times to both, to try to see what those agencies can provide to them, try to provide assistance.
Right.
Like I said, Mr. Horton's the one that came up with the bus pass idea. That's been very helpful in this regard. This, this Friday is a judge's meeting for lower court jurisdictions, judges, justices of peace, and city courts throughout Yavapai County. And one of the things on their agenda is that they're having a presentation where they're wanting to consider having public defenders at initial appearances. Well, we've been doing that for six, six, seven years, six and a half years. I think I started doing it within six months of my arrival here. And, and like I said, that gets rid of cases much more quickly. It gets them to start their services sooner. It gets restitution money into the victims' pockets, pockets of, uh, victims sooner. And it helps move cases along quicker with fewer court appearances and less, less demands on the court staff. And as indicated, we've been very successful in resolving cases in a more timely manner and just deterring, uh, future criminal behavior. So with that, I think I'll cut it short there, because I know the progress report discussed many other things. But if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Questions?
You usually have many questions when you get done, because you're pretty thorough.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you, um, share with me, some of the other communities here in the Verde Valley have, only have, um, a judge like 24 hours a week or something? What is the differences in our caseload? And obviously, there's a difference in the fact that you've cleaned up the backlog that was hanging over our heads, and in fact, um, before you came, we were sanctioned for that. And, um, so I'm really proud of your accomplishments, what you've done. You've been just really a great manager with how to, um, uh, help pay for the court. And, but still, as I hear in the community, that you're a very fair person toward those who come to the court because they've committed a type of crime that would come to a municipal judge, so. I do appreciate all you, I mean, just really, it's brilliant having, um, these appointed magistrates and this idea, I don't know where, I mean, it, it seems like it came from you, but I think that's been really great for the citizens of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley who come to your court. That they don't have to be turned away, that they actually can get their issue taken care of right then and there. And so there's a lot of backup in your court.
Right, and the good thing is, is that, you know, someone with a civil traffic case, maybe they need an extension on their payment or something. Every person they talk to in that courthouse has the authority to do something about it. If I'm on the bench with the case loaded, and I have one of my cooks in there with me, and we're doing a criminal bucket, someone comes and they need something taken care of, they don't have to file a motion. It sits on judge, some judge's desk for a week or two, like in other courts. It gets resolved right away. It avoids a lot of backlog, keeps people from having to come to court multiple times. They walk through an order and their extension. And, and there's lots of issues that we can take care of. Sometimes you need additional time to finish their domestic violence counseling, for example, or their alcohol counseling. Maybe they had a, had a problem with being able to pay things for a while because they lost their job, and they needed another order to go back to, to counseling and get an amended order. Where you will do any of, of a number of things right away while that person's there. They don't have to come back, and they didn't have to sit on somebody's desk. And people don't have to handle that same file two or three or four more times before something's resolved. It's immediately handled, the file goes back and then where it came from. I think it works quite well. You know, I learned a little bit about appointing people as, as, um, civil traffic hearing officers. George Logan, who was down in the city, uh, court of surprise, he's now retired. And he had like a couple, two or three out of a big staff that, that were appointed as civil traffic hearing officers. So I kind of followed through with that, and I thought, you know, why not have everybody be able to be appointed as a civil traffic hearing officer to start with? And then with Janie at the Elks, with all the 15-plus years of experience that she had, there wasn't any reason why she couldn't be a, an associate magistrate and went right across the street, anyone you can refer justice in the peace or the high school. All known, she had a college degree, has managed court system for 15 years. So she was a logical first choice. And then we were lucky to get Lynn Reardon, who decided she wanted to come work for us instead of continuing to work for the county. She had over 25 years' experience. She was here in 1980 and 81, I think she said, you know, working for the court here, and then working for Superior Court and the public defender's office. She sits in, in court every day with judges for over 10 years, watching how they handle things. Wasn't any reason why she couldn't be an associate magistrate, and she's done an excellent job. She likes doing some civil traffic cases now and then, so. We let her do those, because that helps with her job satisfaction. And, uh, allows me to do work on other things while she chooses to do that, so. It, we try to do a lot of things that are cutting edge, that maybe people haven't thought of, but it's the experience that I have from many other different courts, seeing the problems that they have. And, uh, you know, as a private attorney, you know, trying to see what kind of issues people have and clients have with the courts, and what their complaints are. I've tried to, so-called, and over the years that I've been an attorney and a judge, and luckily, when I've been able to be here, you guys have all been supportive of the things that I've tried to do, anywhere from the associate magistrate program to deferred prosecution to the ankle monitors. Those are all things that, you know, we're trying to be cutting edge about. We're trying to be better than other, other courts. Your question earlier about what are so many other courts doing? Well, Sedona, they have mostly civil trafficking, so those are things we need to resolve. And if you're driving school, or everyone's father's hearing, they don't have anywhere near as many criminal cases as we do, so. He wanted to go part-time, so he's there like three days a week. Camp Verde, I think, three days a week over there. But we end up being, especially on Fridays, the only court on the side of the mountain to do orders of protection injunction against harassment. What happens if, if we were open? There wouldn't be any place, but the people will go. And we can, sometimes they call us, and all of us judges are on a rotating basis where we can get emergency calls, but that's an order of protection. It's good for, until the next business, they get an interment to, run to the court as soon as the courts are open. And to get a, a longer term, one year order of protection. But, um, you know, I think, I think the hours that were there and available, and Judge Lundey, he doesn't get to have pro temps that much, because they kind of get hogged on the other side of the mountain by a certain court over there that has the power. So, when, when he's not there, or he's on vacation, or he's sick, there's nobody handling things over there. So five days a week, we're getting a lot of cases that wouldn't have anywhere to go if it weren't for, for us and having all the associate magistrates there.
Okay, so I think you're doing a really fantastic job, and your staff is also, and it sounds like you're a great team, and appreciate all the classes that you've been taking, and I think that that's been beneficial to your whole, whole organization. So council, um, looking at, uh, the current salary range for the judge is, um, there's, well, there's three ranges here. The lowest is $77,600. The median is $89,850. And the highest is $114,352.18. The judge's current annual salary is $110,189.35 per the agreement. Judge LaSota received a 5% increase on April 13th, 2014, which I believe is your contract date. And then another 1.5% COLA increase on 7/114. Um, this information comes from Iris, and, um, she, it says, "If an increase is decided upon, here are a few amounts council could consider." A 3% raise, and keeping in mind that the budget is tight this year, while we're contemplating for all of our employees. But 3% would be a $3,305.68 raise, which would bring the salary to $113,495.3. A 4% raise would be $4,407.57, A 4% raise would be $4,407.57, which would bring a salary to $114,596.92. A 5% raise would be $5,509.46, for a total of $115,698.82. So discussion?
Can I ask one thing real quick?
Yes.
Just on that range that you, you mentioned, you know, remember we had a discussion a long time ago when those were getting kicked in for all the different departments and I tried to discuss about how the fact that, that lent it in a lot of smaller courts and had a lot less cases and that type of thing. And the determination that was made at that time was that, you know, we don't need to worry about that because you have the power to do whatever you think is appropriate, even if it goes outside, side of those ranges. So I don't think there was any intent by this counsel to limit it at that amount.
No, this is the counsel's decision, and it wouldn't necessarily go by that. It goes by the kind of job you're doing and what we can afford in certain budget years, but.
And I, I would hope that I could get a 5%, which is what my staff have all gotten over the past year or two, and 5% would take me right up to where the police chief who just started here's current salary is, and I've been here for seven years. So, I mean, obviously, there's different considerations on his salary versus mine.
And we do this, we do this every year because you have a contract for two years, but it was our discussion that in order to be fair to you, because other employees were considered each year for merit pay and, and COLA if we, if we have COLA. We haven't had COLA very often in the past few years.
Please remember, three years ago, I got 0% at that time because I was asked to do the more training and stuff, so.
Right. And so that's why last year you, you got probably some extra last year.
The year before, a little bit was.
The 14, 13, 14?
Yeah. And then it was, last year was 5% because that's what my staff was all getting.
Right.
So whatever your pleasure is.
Yeah, I wonder why she didn't put the 15 in here, only, she only put the 14 in there. Just probably missed it, whatever. So discussion?
I, you know, I was, I was your biggest critic, as you know, years back, and I think you've proven yourself to be efficient magistrate, and I think you've done a lot of good changes to your, to your court.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you've worked hard and you have received the training and everything that, that you need to be, you know, successful.
And I tried to show you the numbers too, that we're not just relying on getting a little better and staying there. We're increasing the quality of excellence every year on all this statistics with ALC. Every year, we've gotten better in every category.
Well, and efficiencies, you know, that's, that's, I guess I don't so much look at the revenue coming in from fines and everything like that. I mean, I think it's more important to be, you know, efficient than bringing in more money.
It's nice, yeah, nice not to have the Superior Court coming down and saying, "You will, you will change what you're doing." It's nice not to hear complaints from the public. This is the smoothest court since I've been on the council over 20 some-odd years that I've ever seen. And you've made a big difference. You've gone well over what we requested you to do and, and the certifications and all that you've gotten. And it shows, even your demeanor in front of us has changed, and that's been a big improvement. Because we're not ogres, but you expect excellence, and it looks like you've pretty much brought our court way, way up, and I really want to thank you for that. And I appreciate the classes that you've gone through.
Thank you.
That, that being said, I, I feel strongly that, I know that it's a terrible budget year once again, and, you know, I'm, I'm going to be consistent in any review, that we, we stick with about 3% because I think that's, you know, not going to shock the budget as much. So I don't want to feel like, don't want you to feel like I'd be singling you out, but I think that we need to be serious about trying to get our, you know, our budget to balance this year. I'm concerned about it.
And that's kind of what I've been personally thinking about all of our employees, is that we really have to look at the budget this year, and it's tight.
Yeah, we haven't recovered. You know, we're still in the, still in the dregs, I think. You know, we're not recovering as quickly as the state is sales tax-wise, so it's just, makes it tighter and tighter.
You deserve the five, but at this time of the, during the budget session, I mean, this year is going to be really, really tight. But, so I think probably the 3% is probably where we're going to end up at. Any comments, Mr. Garrison?
No, I, I'm going to reiterate what Karen said. I think you've done, you know, just an outstanding job of not only increasing your professionalism, but that of the court system as well. And I, I've taken a department that had a lot of public criticism and created one that I don't hear about at all, which is really, really nice. And I think you've done an excellent job of doing that, and I appreciate the work you've done and the effort extra above and beyond that you've done to make that happen also. So I, I appreciate what you've done, and I know you hate coming in here and standing before us, and, and nobody, you know, loves this, but this year it was really kind of really nice, refresher to hear what you've done and how the, the system's working. So I just want to say thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Myself, I guess, you know, I'm kind of the same spot. I'm very impressed with how you've come along and what you've put, put forth. I'll, I'll probably be the outlier and say, you know, I'm sort of a meat-in-the-middle kind of guy, so I would, I would kind of go for 4%. I know that's, it's, the budget is tight, but I think that, you know, myself, just to see where we've come along to, I know it's not five, but I would, I would tend towards four myself, but I'm just one of the group. But that's what I'll put forth, and I just really appreciate your effort and what you're doing.
Thank you.
I like that, Jesse. I would go along with that also. Compromise is good. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the 4% raise for the judge.
I'll second that.
Did I get that right?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
In terms of COLA, then, is that something that we consider for the entire organization?
We'll be doing that during the budget, and that will be determined by our ability to pay it, and I would be quite surprised if we have that ability this year. But time will tell as we, Mary Ann called me today about setting up budget dates, the meetings, and she was supposed to call all of you also, and so that's coming up. So we don't really know about that yet.
What fun it is.
Okay, so let's see. You made, you made the motion, and you seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm, I'm opposed, but it's not based on your job performance.
Okay, so we have four, so we have, that's the majority, so that passes. And thank you again for doing a great job and for being patient with us in tight years. And hopefully, in other years, we'll be able to make up that difference for you by some good sales tax years.
The next year, I'll continue to do as I have been. I always try to better everything that I can in every area that I can.
You do.
So continue to pour hard, and try to keep the court in as good a shape as we can, and try to better things in areas that we're able to better things in.
We appreciate it, and we.
Thank you for your support of the court. Appreciate that as well.
We appreciate not getting phone calls. We appreciate not getting phone calls.
I try to treat everybody that walks in my court the same, whether or not they're a homeless person, or they've got an attorney, or they don't have an attorney. Everybody that walks in court gets treated with the same respect. And I want everybody to walk out of that courtroom feeling that the judge listened to them, was fair to them, and tried to do the right thing, and tried to be just. So that's my overall philosophy and insight. I think from the fact that you don't have complaints, I think it must be worth it, I hope.
Well, I think you're doing a great job, so keep up the great work and tell your team thank you too, from the counsel. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next item is, I move to pay the claims.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, and Mr. Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move we adjourn.
Okay.
The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Yes.